Thanks for coming out. This is, I'm calling to order the Select Board hearing continued, a continued hearing, in order to receive evidence on whether to discontinue or designate as a trail a portion of the Class 4 section of Town Highway 7. What we're going to do tonight is, first of all, we have, we, the Select Board requested that the city attorney, the town attorney, prepare a, ask for a survey of the road. And a survey has been prepared, the surveyor is here tonight to, I guess what I'm going to ask you to do is to come up and have a seat. Timothy Cowan is the surveyor. And what we, he provided through our town attorney, Joe McLean, who is here, he provided the survey to us. We in turn distributed it to the parties to this proceeding and posted it. So what I'm going to do tonight is ask Tim to kind of summarize and present his survey, and then give all of you a chance to ask any questions you want, or make any additional testimony you want. I think likely today at the conclusion of this, we will close the public hearing, because we haven't closed the public hearing before, we just continue it. I think tonight will be the last night, and we'll close the public hearing full speed. So why don't we start? Tim, welcome.
Good to be here.
So please, go ahead and present to us the, your results of your survey.
Okay. How much time would you like to spend? It could be a half an hour, but I could shorten it to 10 minutes.
I think 10 minutes would be alright.
You like that?
Yeah. I think there are certain people who are able to read, certainly able to read the whole thing, others your conclusions, but I can be somewhere in the middle.
Well, I have a, I have some maps to use as exhibits, and it'll be a little bit tough in this situation, though it'd be all right if you let's stand over here. Oh, that would be great too. The problem is whether, what direction is it going?
It would be great so that both, both, we and you are in.
And he can, he can be, then white, that's it. Show the running.
Why don't you just have Tim, and should we enter into evidence before we, uh, it doesn't matter when you enter it in, but I would just have Tim describe briefly what his background experiences, so that's on the record.
Okay, I'll tell you. So just to be clear, this is Joe McLean, he's our town attorney, he's advising.
I did introduce him.
Thank you, Joe.
Before you start, wait, before you start, you know what? I would like to move to enter this, Joe, is this by voting?
No.
No, we just, we don't need to move to enter.
No.
Okay.
At this point.
Okay, so I just like to.
We have two things to enter.
Right.
You will eventually.
Okay, well, we'll do that. Go ahead, then Joe talks about yourself.
Of course. Yeah, that's good. Thanks, Joe. My name is Tim Cowan, and I'm a licensed land surveyor and a senior surveyor for a company called Civil Engineering Associates in South Burlington. And what Joe asked us to do back in the summer was to review town records and do what surveying we needed to do in order to get a handle on where Town Highway 7 begins and ends, or began and ended, and what's going on in between. Make sure you understand that I'm not here to give any advice on what to do with the road, I'm just telling, explaining where it is and where it begins and ends. Those of you that are familiar with this, with the survey bill from 1840, it was the original description of this, this town highway, what we're calling 7 now. And those of you who are familiar with it, remember that it starts at the east line of Alonzo York's land. And so the first question I had was, what did Alonzo York, where was his land in 1840? And luckily, the, the land records were quite clear on that, that in 1838, he acquired all of what? 22 in Division 3, from, from a man named Ely. And this, this is a plan of their lotting system in, in the whole town palace. There's three different divisions. There was a first division are these large lots, kind of in the middle of town. And then the second division was this L-shaped garden, it's a little bit over 100 acres apiece. And the third division is this tier of lots along the line with Worcester, on the west side of town. And Lot 23, Division 3, is up here in orange.
Is that, is that part of the survey?
I didn't survey the whole parcel, I surveyed the road.
That's the Schultz lot.
Okay, that's what I'm asking, what part is that?
Well, we'll get to that. We'll get to it all over. Yeah, the Schultz's are on this lot here, which is 22, just the, the one that's filled in completely is Lot 23. If you can figure it out, so go to the next page, we got a blow up of it here. So, in 1838, Alonzo York got the whole of that Lot 22. And then, just a year later, he subdivided it and conveyed the south one half of it to Willard and Hanford. And so I'm going to just draw a line across here. That's how the descriptions were written at this time too. When, when York got that parcel from, from Ely, it was the whole of Lot 22 and the third division. That was the description. And then when he conveyed, a year later, he conveyed the south one half, it's Lot 23 to, to Hanford.
22.
22.
So, the description calls for this road to begin at the east line of Alonzo York's land, at a point that's six rods, which would be 99 feet, north of the northeast corner of Hanford. So that puts it up in here.
How many rods?
Six rods. 99 feet. So, the next thing, the, the description then gives a series of three bearings and three distances, and says it ends at the center of West County Road. So, the first thing I did after looking up the land records part of this, was to go up to where I believe the, the lot line would be, and sure enough, there's a, there's a very obvious stone wall along pretty much this whole lot line.
Between 22 and 23?
Yeah, between 22 and 23. That's very well marked with a stone wall, then, and some barbed wire fence traces. And nowadays, it's painted bright red. I'm not sure who painted it, whether it was the owners now of, of this lot, or the owners of 23. Let's switch to the next page.
Can you re-clarify, I asked you if Schultz's lot was Lot 23 in Division 3, and you said it was Lot 22? And I'm looking at an ortho photo, and it says Lot 23, Division 3 is Gary and Jill Schultz. And that's what, the lot on the, to the right of where you drew the line?
This is Lot 22.
Right, so Lot 23 is to the right. That's the Schultz lot. Right. So you were in.
I'm just speaking.
So that's what I asked you, if that was a Schultz lot, and you said there's lots 22 earlier, so okay.
I'm sorry.
So the Schultz is 23.
That's what I was.
Okay, sorry, I just spoke. Anyway, we've got York in 23, and nowadays Schultz in 22. These are just for, you've probably all seen these, this is Walling's map.
So I'm confused, you just said Schultz was now 22.
I'm sorry.
Schultz is 23.
Wait, yeah, okay. Go ahead.
It's 22, 23.
Right. Schultz is 23, Division 3. I'm looking at it right here.
It's written in the report.
Right, that's what I'm looking at.
Go ahead.
Seriously? Okay, I'll go ahead. This, this is just a Walling's map from 1858, and I'm just showing it so that you can see that at that time, they were showing a road up in this area, and somebody named Parmenter moved at the end of it. And now I'll switch to the next sheet. This is a portion of the Beers Atlas from 1873, and I'm going to point to, point to the road here. This is Town Highway 7. Begins, begins at County Road, or one end of it is County Road, and the other end they're showing at Homestead, marked L of Carr. The reason I'm showing this is just that, kind of, I'm trying to go chronologically through the history of the road a little bit. But we'll get more to the survey description in a minute. One thing that's interesting here is, if you look at Beers Atlas, underneath the road there's a small figure that says 160. That means 160 rods. And so they, they customarily show distances in rods between intersections, or to show lengths of roads. And the 160 rods, though, brings you all the way to Mr. Carr's house at that time, which isn't necessarily part of the town road. We'll go to the next. This, this, you'll be having a hard time seeing this from the distance, but this is an aerial photo from 1942. And I chose this because the road shows up quite well in 42. In later aerial photos, it doesn't show up well at all because of, because of trees and so forth. But I will point out, you can see this edge of woods here, that's that lot line between 22 and 23, which is the, where I was telling you about the stone wall and blazed trees and all that. And then you can see the road wandering down here. I've shown the Schultz's house, I've added that, plotted it on there just for context. It wasn't there at that time, of course. But there was a house down here near the intersection that was, shows up on the Beers Atlas as a prey in place, so I'll call it the Praise for now. If you look way up here, near, near Vanna's nose, way up here, there is a, a little block that is Homestead, that, that corresponds with the Carr house we showed you on the Beers Atlas. That's basically the end of, of that roadway. I think there's both a house and a barn in there. You can see a little bit of signature of a roadway along here, there's bushes and stuff growing up alongside the road. What you can see, if you were able to look at this up close, is you can see the intersection of that roadway and our stone wall at the, at the lot line. Which is where the description of the 1840 highway, what we're calling Town Highway 7 now, begins there, and then goes down the hill, cross, and connects.
It doesn't begin here until?
That's right. It doesn't begin here. And this is, and this is the important thing, is that, I mean, the, the question that kept coming up is where does the road, the town's right of this road end? And it's at Alonzo York's line. And the first thing we had to do was find out where Alonzo York's line is, and that's here. So the description starts there, and then goes three courses and three distances down to where it intersects with the West County Road, so-called. If you were able to see this up close, in 19.
You want to take it around with people?
Sure. In 1942, if you look at the, the line of trees that's coming down the hill from west to east, from near that, from near that lot line, if you look really closely, you can see light marks on each side of the trees. This is a really steep part of the, the road. It's average 17 degree, or 17 percent from down here up to here, it's a bit steep. And anyway, what I'm getting at is that you can see a little bit of road on each side of these trees. And I think what was happening by 1942, the road was so eroded, as you all, a bunch of you have seen it, that it was being traveled on either side of the old road. And you can actually pick that up a little bit in this 1942 area. And then they come, the two roads, the road on each side of the gully, come together again about the area where it gets, it flattens out. You can see a cluster of trees along here, a lot of trees, and that corresponds with some stone walls still there to this day. And then the other thing that's, shows up really well on this map, is that you can see the three roads coming together. County Road, which is called West County Road, Town Highway 5, Town Highway 8, I believe you call it, and Town Highway 7. This road came later. This was, West County Road was around 1808. The road we're talking about is 1840, and then this one was 1851. They all come together out here, close to where the Schultz's driveway enters West, West County Road today.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yes.
So you mentioned there are roads, there's indication of roadways on either side of the gully? The actual town right of way is where?
In the gully.
In the gully?
That's coming.
Okay. Good.
Next chapter.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, in the, in the report that I emailed, and you've all seen, this upper map is overlaid on a, on an aerial ortho photo. I've turned it off for this exhibit so that people can see the line work a little bit better. But from the starting point in the lot line, between 22 and 23, there's three compass courses, like this. Calls for, I'll have to read the distance because I can't remember. The first one is 54 rods, which amounts to 891 feet. That's the place where it's the steepest, and the road is washed out the most. And the, what you can see of roadway now seems to be wandering out of the right of way, on the south side, right in this first, in the upper half of this area. So the, what we were looking at and thinking was, was the highway was, is really outside of the right of way. But it's in the right of way at the very beginning, and it's back in the right of way when you get about halfway down the hill. This isn't unusual, it's a case where roads get eroded, and people start going around it, and pretty soon, they're way off on the side to get beyond the, the steep banks of these gullies. Second course, the present, present roadway, I'm calling it a roadway with, it's in, in quotation marks, it's not much of a roadway. But it comes very close to the edge of the right of way at this, this angle point. And then, where things flatten out again, there's very little sign of the roadway today. And that's because it's out in open country, and has been probably plowed and so forth. Imagine if you really needed to, you could find a archaeologist or a geomorphologist, they could cut some trenches across there, and you could locate where the road was based on the stratigraphy of the soils beneath the ground. But anyway, let's see, we did have a line of trees on one side, which seemed to correlate really well with the south side of the right of way. But it's the third course down here that's probably mostly confusing. In the description, it calls for the bearing, and it says, that's this bearing, six rods to the center of West County Road. And so you get there, and you're clearly, you're way up by Schultz's house here, but almost at the end of their driveway. And it's clearly further than 99 feet to West County Road. So, first question, there's a surveyor, how far is it? And it turns out that it's 36 rods, rather than six. And I'm talking really close to 36 rods. And there's, in, in surveying, it's, it's a rule of construction that we use all the time. When there are monuments, and there are bearings and distances, the monuments control the end of the line. So if it says six rods, or if it said 100 rods to West County Road, you would be going to West County Road and stop right there. I think the confusion has been that people are adding up the, the record distances, including this just 99 feet here, instead of almost 600 feet, and, and measuring up the hill from West County Road and coming up well short of the lot line. And that's, to me, it looks like that's caused a lot of confusion.
Did you find this Brown's Mill Dam?
No, but we know where it is, it's.
Because there would be evidence of it being a dam, right?
Well, the, the road is evidence of where, where, where the road, where our road ends. I mean, West County Road is evidence. But it crossed the dam, it's, this, we know where the stream is here.
Right, the mill here in there.
Right, okay. And the, the road was, the West County Road was altered in 1836, I want to say, so that it would go across that dam. But as it happens, you, you pretty much have to assume that the, the stream was where the stream is now, and, which we can find. And it is a little bit, well, the other thing is that it doesn't say the center of the dam, we can't tell where that is. And I don't know how long the dam was. So if you go six rods from up West County Road, you're presumably at the end of where the dam was in 1842, but I can't prove that.
So you think that we're dealing with a Scrivener's error?
Yeah, I really do.
So if it was 36 rather than six?
If it was 36 instead of six, it would make perfect sense, and it would, it would be the way we've drawn here.
So would you present your conclusion to this?
Sure.
Oh, hang on, before you do that. Building on Mark's clarification, I guess amplifying your point makes you sure we understand it. It's a Scrivener's error that has read six in, what, deeds or something?
Only in that, only in the survey bill from 1840. I don't know of any other descriptions of that road.
Okay, and then, but it, but it should be properly 36. And the kind of bolstering point you made is that you rely in surveying on the monuments, which are the lot line which you've clarified, and West County Road.
Right.
Those are the monuments.
Those are the monuments.
And the road ran between the two.
Correct.
Okay.
In fact, you'll find town, town roads described sometimes without any bearings or distances, and they'll just say starting at Captain Scott's Doryard and ending at Widow Jones's house.
Is there any proof for your conclusion?
Well, I'm finished, and then I will open it to ask, for all of you guys, to ask him anything you want, okay?
Just, just so everybody's clear on the importance of the monuments at the end, it's, the monuments can't be easily mistaken. It's easy to make errors in measurement. You can make transcription errors writing down the measurement in the field, and then the person writing the instrument at the town clerk's office has another chance to make an error. But the, the beginning point at the lot line and the finishing point at the center of West County Road are, are very obvious. And if you, if it's 36 instead of six rods, then it all falls together very nicely. That's it.
So your conclusion as to the beginning and end of the road, if you would repeat?
Yeah. The road begins at the lot line between 22 and 23, and, which is clearly marked with a stone wall, barbed wire, and red blazes, has been used as the lot line for, at least since the 1830s, before that, as far as we know. And the other end of it is at the center line of West County Road. I was a little bit confused, a little bit, because I've seen some maps that call this road, West County Road 2. And not being a native, I didn't know about that. But that road came in later, and that was like 11 years after our road that we're talking That's about it.
Okay. You were going to take independent testimony, but let's start with anybody who has, would like to ask questions. Tim? Tell us your name.
My name is Charles Lauer. Thank you for the professional opinion. My question has to do with monument to monument, the way that we're looking at this last leg.
Yep.
I understand that monuments can't be moved, a corner of a stone wall, a granite post that's buried in the ground, and that can deviate from a, the fine distance on a plan.
Yep.
I understand that clearly.
Yep.
I'm wondering what the limit is for something like that, because we're talking about increasing the length of the road by, like 36 percent of the length of the road. So that's, adding 500 feet to this seems completely out of this, out of this world. So I just want to understand, like, what would be the limit when you wouldn't consider the monument to monument?
The, the thing is here is that we know where West County Road was even at that time, and we know where the, where the lot line was at that time.
So there's no chance that West County Road was, or?
Yeah, yeah, there, there was a small alteration in, in 36, but it was just in this section here, and it was, it was minor, it was to, to make sure they could put the road right across the dam, basically used the dam.
Was 1836 or 1936?
1836.
So is it increasing the size of the lot?
No. No, not changing any of the lot lines. The lot lines, in fact, the only place they come into play here is for that starting point near the bottom of the hill.
I think in my understanding, going back to his question?
Yep.
What I'm hearing from you is, when you know where the endpoints are?
Yeah.
Really, that's what you go by, regardless of the distance error. And in this case, you're especially impressed by the fact that it was six versus the 3/6.
Yeah. It would have been harder to explain if it said 10 instead of 36, for instance. But, but as far as the limit, I, I understand your question is, you know, how wrong can you be?
Right.
You can be pretty wrong, because numbers can get written down wrong, and, and they do frequently. In this case, you look at the original instrument, and it looks like almost a gap before the six. And so my, my pet theory, and I can't prove this, is that the, the Scrivener is writing down that number, and he's looking at the surveyor's note, notes, and can't tell whether that's a 3/6 or 5/6. And so he just puts the six, and he's gonna ask, he's gonna ask Robert later on which, what number that was, and just never, never happens.
I don't know if we want to go down that rabbit hole of coming up with various things that could have gone wrong a hundred and sixty years ago, but of course, I'm concerned adding by a factor of six, that last leg of the, of the survey. that last leg of the, of the survey, and five hundred feet is not insignificant. And so, so I'm not, I'm not comfortable crossing over it and moving on and just saying, well, it's probably, any number of errors. That's, that seems, um, unlikely.
You're, you're right that it's a lot of, it's a lot of feet. It's almost five hundred feet. But it's only one digit. It's one digit that didn't get written down.
Right, but to add another digit, a more magnitude to that digit, to make it work? I mean, I work with data every day. I would never believe I'd lose my license, because that's just not proper. Of course, so you can't just say a thirty-six, ah, it's probably supposed to be thirty-six. That, that's completely...
Yeah, and that's, I'm not saying it's probably thirty-six. I'm saying that, that would be the conclusion that one would have to reach for all of the other data to, to fit. You'd take all of the data to, into consideration. We've got pieces of fence, we've got the road itself, we've got stone walls, we've got lines of trees, we've got old maps. Um, I think there's a lot, there's a lot of data there besides just that thirty-six.
But what we're not considering is the reasons why that survey could be accurate, because it was accepted by, by the town at the time. So what we haven't talked about yet is what, what could there have been a hundred and sixty years ago that would have made that, that survey correct? And now we're trying to guess a hundred and sixty years later. And really, there could have been a number, any number of reasons where the length of that road is correct, as, as was accepted by the town.
Well, we know it's, it's just the standard rule of construction. In reading any deeds or highway descriptions, we know where it begins and we know where it ends. You can, you could pretty much throw out all the numbers. We know where it begins and ends.
Could you go back over how you know where it ends? Can you clarify again? I know it was the beginning of your talk, how, no, where, where it begins, I guess, that's what you're calling it. How do you know it begins as a town road?
Okay, because we know, we know that this is, the first thing we, the first question was Alonso York. Where was his east line? Go to Land Records, his, he owns Lot Twenty-two. The east line of Lot Twenty-two, we know from, from our first map that I was showing, we know generally speaking where those lots are. From doing surveys further south in the same tiered lots, I know where those lots are. And they're, they're general bearing, general lengths of those lines. And when I went to the place where I thought it would be, sure enough, there's a big stone wall. And everybody's been using it as the lot line here.
But I, I, I understand that part, that's the lot line. I'm not assuming, how do you know the road begins there?
And then we know roughly where half, the half lot line was, because we know the dimensions of the lot.
But he's asking, how do you know the road begins there?
Begins there.
Okay, the western end of the road?
Yeah. Because that's where it says in the, in the survey bill.
Okay, that was the question.
It begins at the lot line, to paraphrase it, it begins at the lot line, six rods north of the cornlet, northeast corner of the...
Got it, okay, that's, that's...
And oh, by the way, there's, the fence line has a big gap in it right there.
Yeah, oh, no, we saw, a bunch of us have walked, I, I redid the lot line. I just don't know how you knew the road began.
Aaron, you have a question?
Thank you.
Yep, sorry.
Uh, well, no, I think I just wanted to, you, you, you just repeated, Tim, part of what I wanted to say is it's not just one data point. It's the six rods north on the lot line. The lot lines, as they were laid out originally when towns were chartered, are super clear. And it's not so much adding five hundred feet. Nobody's adding. It's, it's clarifying that the, the, the road included that five hundred feet, as evidenced by it started here and it ended here, and that is what you rely on. And if I understood you originally...
Right, if, if there was no dimension at all, if there were dimensions and bearings only for these first two lines, and we just stopped here a little bit west of the Schultz's driveway. And then the description didn't even mention any bearings or distances, but said to center line of West County Road, we know where it is. The bearing helps us a lot in figuring out where the line was.
Right.
By the way, it fits really well.
Is there anyone in the audience who...
And to the George survey. The part I can't agree with is they made a six hundred foot mistake. I know what you're saying. I don't buy it. Uh, we can disagree. This is America. So, uh, I don't know. I mean, it's, if, if you can't believe, or if you think they made a mistake there, maybe they made a mistake somewhere else. Maybe it didn't go from Alonso's property. Maybe it went from French buckled doors. You just don't know. I mean, you know, at one point can, you know, I, you can't believe this, but you can't believe this. I, I ain't going there. The six hundred feet error is not even realistic. Okay?
What, what difference does, I mean, so I can yell whatever I want, but what difference does it make? Those five hundred and six hundred feet, what does it do?
It just, it just gets you to West County Road, where, where the road, the road was clearly trying to go from Alonso's road, Alonso's line to the West County Road.
So, so if this five hundred or six hundred feet that we're talking about, wasn't there the road would end before you got to the county road?
Right, right. That's, that's why I have trouble with Gary's idea. If you, if you start at the top of the hill, Gary, and you're coming down?
It just ends in the middle of there.
Then, then it ends in front of your house.
Or farther up, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Which seems unlikely.
If you measure from the county road up?
Yep.
That road stops at a trail, a logging road, a wagon road off to the left. Maybe they measured from the county road up and go, oh, we're in the town. We only want to take responsibility as far as this road here.
I think it's evident from the, the words on the actual deed that they're trying to build a road from Alonso's east line to the West County Road. So the only, the only, if you want to argue about where Alonso's line was, then that's cool with you.
No, then maybe they, you know, basically, okay, we're gonna lay a road back. It's gonna go from Alonso's down to county road, okay. Let's measure it, and they go, this is as far as we're gonna go. Now we only take responsibility for this budget.
We don't, but anymore. It's still, it's still, if you just ignore all of the dimensions, it still goes from Alonso's line to the center of West County Road.
I think, uh...
Yep, you didn't ignore any of them.
Okay, I think, I think we have beaten this issue of, that is, one, our surveyor is saying, what really matters is the beginning point and the endpoint. You guys are saying, an error so big causes the question, the whole thing, for me, we hear you. Is there any other questions of the, Tim, the survey? Tim, thank you very much for your service. Now, let me... Could we please enter the survey and the map into the record? I want you to all of Tim's. And, uh, well, Tim, could we have that?
Uh, yep.
Comment the motion to enter, uh, Tim's, Tim's exhibits, uh, completely into the record.
And report.
And the court. Okay, we haven't done motions before entering the record. I was listening to the board.
That's what you're...
You don't need it.
I don't have to either. Okay, so we're entering... I'll second that. Okay, we're entering, okay, all is in favor of them?
Aye.
We are entering the survey and the maps into the record. We have another map. And the report.
Right, the maps and the report.
Yes.
And that's Exhibit Twenty-three. We have an Exhibit Twenty-two to take care of, which came in after our last meeting on July seventeen, eighteen.
Yeah.
This was, um, the Conservation Commission... I mean, the Conservation Commission minutes, where they withdrew their previous letter in support of keeping Town Highway Seven. And they have now asked to have that removed, and they had a, here's a copy in a minute. Um, do you want to know what the minutes say?
Yes.
Okay, Town Highway Seven, potential discontinuance. Stephanie noted that in her cover letter to the Select Board attaching to CC's letter opposing discontinuance, she had added that after learning more about the issue, the commission may revise its position. Josh Schultz explained why his paneling wants the road discontinued. Stephanie reminded the commission that the Select Board, not the commission, has to decide whether Town Highway Seven should be discontinued, and suggested that the legal question of how the, how long the town road is and whether it has the ownership's property or extends further, may have to be resolved by a court. Stephanie told the commission that Eric Thoransson had said in the context of the ancient roads issue that any new or upgraded roads in a forest block can create habitat fragmentation, and the town already has a lot of people's roads. Larry said that if we had known the road did not extend past the Schultz's line, we would not have recommended what we recommended, which was to keep the road. Julie said that if there are any children playing in the road, it should be discontinued. Neil said that the road is a town asset, and it does not matter whether it extends past the property line and what we should be careful of setting a precedent. Mark said that the roads are our town square, but we should withdraw the letter because we do not have consensus among the committees.
With Mark, Tim?
Mark Brown, who's on the Committee, Conservation Commission.
Thank you.
Mary moved, and Julie seconded, that we tell the Select Board that at this meeting, we voted to withdraw the letter we had previously sent. Thank you. And this was their minutes of August third. Can I ask a clarifying question? So does, does this have the effect of formally removing both pieces from our record? Or do they just both stay in? I would just leave them both in.
Right.
Okay.
Right. Um, so what I'd like to do now is give anyone in the audience a chance, if they have anything additional to say that they haven't said. We do have on the record every, all of your testimony, and not only is it on the record, we heard it. We actually heard it. So you don't need to repeat anything that you've said previously. In other words, we know your positions unless they've changed. If anybody's changed a position or wants to say anything in response to this, the new evidence that was introduced tonight, please feel free. Yes?
I'm a gentleman, Lord.
I don't know, okay, I know it. You know, I don't know too much about what's going on, but I, I don't like giving up town right away for other people. I want to leave it. I've been in here, I've been in this town for almost eighty years. And I'm born and raised here, so I know pretty near every road. I've walked that road down through what you're talking about. And we need to leave some of these roads open for snow machiners and people who want to nature walk and bicycles and we need to leave that stuff. And, you know, I was set, I'm set on my behind years in Washington, town. Give all these little back roads up, give them up. They give them all up. One right up here, one up over here, right out here, one up over to Jackville. There's one up there, went right down over to, to Vern Cluston, come out on Route fourteen. Just do all that stuff up. That's crazy. People get a little chunk of land and they go crazy, because they got some land, they don't want nobody on it. Well, I got a lot of land too. I don't care who walks on it, just as long as they respect it and don't leave their garbage, anything like that. But you know, I know the old Select Board, you were on it, probably you went through. And you give, let them take these old roads, take and put them up, and just give them up. We don't need to do that. We need to keep these roads open for people, everybody to walk. Make this town a lot nicer. You walk around, buy your bikes, do what you want to do. So these roads up, and I bet you a snow machine has come down that road. I know where that road is. I walked that road a good many times. I hunted through it. I've probably dragged deer down there. And I think you've roughed that road, I can't remember the name of the pond. There's a pond right down there. You know what the name of that pond is?
Reed does. What's the name of the pond beyond?
Huh?
It's not Boston.
It's not Boston?
My land?
No, it's a pond down below, off the mountain. I'll get to the...
That is, yeah.
Yeah, it's Hawke's Pond.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a road right still there, it's a, it's a trail, whatever you want to call it, it's a pond.
Yeah.
The old round sod over, used to be?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I know all of those. Don't tell me anything I don't know. You know, but we give that stuff up, and I hate it. I sit on my butt, and I kick myself in the butt every day thinking about what we did. We can't just, somebody gets a piece of land and they think they own the whole damn world, you know? And that, for example, Lightning Ridge, where I live, we're down the hill, top of the hill. That road used to go, did I show you? It went down through the woods on the right-hand side, very obvious. But the old farmers all got together and they dragged the stones off my land, put them down in the road, and you'll see Lightning Ridge Road, where it's always frosty and wet. You know what I'm talking about? That's because these field stones in there, the water runs in there. Used to come out down, you know where, um, Ron Thompson lives, right? That road used to go right straight through his doo-ya. But you know what? They moved it, they moved it down by, down in the middle, down in the gully. Roy Bowles did that, right down through. And I'm probably off the subject, but I want to congratulate you guys for making a right decision about the town roads and what's going on in this town. I hear a lot what's going on. You guys are right. Probably I'm talking out of line here, you know, you're not talking, but you are right, you know? I can mention just one thing, and I won't talk about it. Anybody wants to know about the town, come and see me. I've been here for almost eighty years, mowing here. My grandfather was the first one, everyone come up and say, you represent the town of Calis. My brothers, my dads, and everybody, all were town representatives, truck boys, farm boys. And I was on the road committee. You know, I was on the road committee. And I talked to the road commissioner, and we told him this. He, he never had any records, and I wanted records. When the truck was breached and changed, we never had any of that. And now, I'll just give you one again, and then I'll shut up. We, our road commissioner wanted to trade, trade that truck in, and most of you have heard this. Most people in the town don't know that. Firmly, he, he, we, he fixed this truck all up. Fixed it, painted it, got it all ready, it looked nice. And then he comes to the Select Board, and you were not on it. And you were on it.
I was.
I was.
And you were. You're two guilty ones. That's why, no, no, really. So he traded it in for a two, a ten-wheeler, what was it? Two hundred and fifty thousand, two thirty, whatever it was?
A hundred.
Well, everything.
We found out about this afterward.
Hmm?
We found out about it afterward.
I know. So he takes this truck that he wanted, didn't like it, didn't want it. He traded it in for a new one, big one, ten-wheeler. He turns around and he buys it back himself for his own fleet. Bull, that is bull. And he's still running that truck today.
Thank you.
And I could tell you a lot more.
Uh, anyone else like to testify? Yes?
Thank you. I wanted to come up here and, um, speak to...
Your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, Charles Flower.
Thank you.
Schultz's, uh, son-in-law.
Yeah.
Also, I, I'm not going to speak anymore about the survey, because we beat that horse to death, but I will say five hundred feet is an unacceptable amount of length to, to add to a, uh, any, any measured roadway, without much more review. So I'll leave it at that. What I want to do is speak to, to the board, um, from a human perspective here. And despite all of this that's going on, there's one important thing that we're, that, that's happening here that I want to shine a light on it, and that is, this road did exist and serve the people of, of Calis. That road was surveyed a hundred and sixty years ago, and that's what it looked like then. Since then, a lot of generations have passed, and a lot of changes have come to this town. And one of those changes that has come naturally to this town is that road was absolutely no use to anybody on the, for the town or, or its residents. It became a hole.
Ladies and gentlemen, could you be quiet, please? Thank you, and let the speaker speak through here. Doug, please. Doug, Mary, we can't hear. Thank you.
And since, uh, since it was accepted as a legal roadway, it's, it's evolved into serve other purposes. And clearly, it has ceased to become a road long ago. That was a hundred and sixty years ago. Since then, there, this is the, uh, the third generation of, of children that lived there now. And now we, we're trying to safeguard that land, because it's, it's dangerous. And now we, we're trying to safeguard that land because it's, it's dangerous to have a right-of-way. And what happens, there's a small handful of people that come out of the woodwork to oppose that. And I understand in small towns, that's the kind of thing that happens. But, so I'm up here to try to put some perspective on how long ago that road existed and what it has become now. And what are we doing here by, by questioning that? How, how, what legal tricks are we going to break out to, what, to keep it and turn it into nothing? It's not even a passable roadway. And we all know that, you've all seen it. So, I guess I just wanted to say that out loud, that it was, um, served its purpose a long, long, long time ago. It wasn't like fifty years ago, it was a hundred and sixty years ago that was surveyed. So, um...
I have a question for you. So, when did it fall out of use though? Was surveying a mistake?
Right, sure.
When did it fall out of use to you?
Right. Yeah, but, sure. Right, we give it fifteen...
Is it asking you a question?
It's a question.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
When did it fall out of use? It may have come into being a hundred and sixty years ago, but when did it, it's use fall away?
Right, right. Yeah, I don't know. I heard, um, the gentleman, the surveyor, um, say, look at the aerial maps from nineteen forty, that it appears that the, there were walking paths on either side, but, no, no, that's, that's a grand assumption. You cannot assume that that was used for anything. You can't look at an aerial map from nineteen forty, eighty years ago and say, well, this was probably foot traffic, this was probably carriage traffic. So, I understand your point, you, I know...
It's just a question, no point. What, have you had any information?
No, but I don't, I don't accept, uh, nineteen forty as that being the use with looking at an aerial survey, especially if it's going to turn these good folks driveway into a... Anyway, that's, that's all.
Thank you. Any other questions by the board of this witness? Thank you, board.
Thanks, folks.
Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Okay.
I, I, I would.
Okay, please come out there, thank you. Tell us your name and please join us.
Yes, sir. My name is Joshua Schultz. Gary Schultz is my dad, Jill Schultz is my mom. I grew up in mom and dad's house right there. So I've, and I now am living in my grandmother's house across the road, so I've been there for, you know, over forty years. And I decided, well, first I'll just, I wanted to do this, um, I'm just doing this because dad asked me to, because I'm the computer guy in our house. We'll send this to you guys electronically, but it occurred to us, like recently, that we had never really submitted pictures. We'd done a walk, but I think that at least this, um, lady here hadn't been on it and so the walk, so I thought, you know, maybe we should like send some pictures. And we did take these pictures, um, when the survey came out, I was able to look and see where it deviated. I made sure the pictures were down on the side where it was in the road. So these are depicting, um, the extent of the damage to the road. I did not go up closer to the stone wall, like closer to the area where it was deviating. Um, and, and I, uh, Tim, the, the surveyor, he mentioned that, you know, it's, it's washed out pretty much the entire way of that steep grade. But I wanted to get some pictures on the record here of that.
Are you asking us to re印 those pictures?
Yeah, sure. And I'll, and I'll, I'll, I got a copy for everybody here, um, and then I'll also, please, I'll get you this electronically.
Right. So you plus that?
Actually, there might be a couple extras here. I got, I wanted a copy for me and that's it. And this, and I also got one for, uh, Mr. McLean, so. So it just has some pictures here of, of that roadway and I tried to do my best to, um, I, I, I labeled them so you all can read the labels and I tried to do my best, even there's some goofy ones of me standing in there to show like the width and, and height of this washout area. And even up closer to the, I mean, it's, it's bad all the way through there. It's wet, um, even when you get outside the gully, it's wet and there's rills and gullies going every which way, even on the outside of the road. So it's just a, this is rugged terrain up there. And, uh...
Gary, is it, is it...
Josh.
Josh.
Yes, okay, yep. I've been calling much worse.
Yeah. Josh is... So, it is your position, your statement, that these pictures are taken in the right way?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes. And, um, and, and it, probably if you were a stranger walking along up there, didn't know there was a road there, in most cases, you probably wouldn't even know it was a road. You probably think it's a big washed-out ravine. I mean, I don't, I, I, you all have seen it, so, um, you know, I, I think during our walk, none of us really ended up walking in the road pretty much at any point. Maybe a couple of times we deviated into it, but most of the walks, we were like out on the edge where it was safer. So with that, I, uh, I, you know, you, you guys can all, can read through these pictures and they'll, they'll, you'll give them electronically so you can post them online too. That'll save you from the scan and stuff, so I'll...
Yeah, that'd be better.
Make it easy for you, yeah. First of all, I just wanted to, you know, talk a little bit about the, the survey. I know that the aerial, the survey referenced a lot, um, the aerial photo that was taken in nineteen forty-one. The, in nineteen forty-two, there was a map, it was actually one of the earlier maps, I think there was a thirty-nine one, but there was a nineteen forty-two map. It looked like it might have been the first time when the town of Callis first started kind of, excuse me, kind of formalizing their submittals to the state of Vermont for, for what their town maps were. What I saw on there on the nineteen forty-two map, so the first one that was like formal had like a legend and everything to it. TH seven, so a year after that aerial photo was taken, uh, I'm sorry, nineteen forty-one, the aerial photo is nineteen forty-two, so a year before that aerial photo was taken in nineteen forty-one, TH seven was, was, was tagged as untraveled. That was what it said. So, in nineteen forty-one, a year before that, we know that it was an untraveled road based on the, well, at least the record that was given to the agency of transportation. We also know, because I, I like history, I talked to my dad, so, um, and also talked to, and even like Colonel Bain, and I know his daughter-in-law is here, um, but just hearing these old stories from back in the day, um, nobody used that road, um, and these are, so these are, now we're going back. I'm talking to people that are now, you know, passed on, well, not, obviously not my dad, but, um, but, and they talked about how that old car farm was always accessed, and I know this road doesn't go to the car farm, that's in the, the survey, but, um, it talks about how that was accessed from the Woodbury Mountain Road. And, um, and, and that also is with what my dad says when he used to come up and visit. And again, we said this during the walk, but I don't think it was, can count his testimony, but I'll say it now. When my dad used to walk over there, he was six years old after the war, they, they came over and dad was a little kid and, um, dad said they had to walk through a brook, like you couldn't tell there was a road down there going up, so they walked through a brook to get up the field where the house now is. The stonework, the stone wall that, um, that was alongside the driveway and there's also stonework down around the brook, down towards the bottom of mom and dad's driveway. And there's also some stone tiles. That was me and dad also helped. So, I, when my friends in high school were playing Super Nintendo, I was out playing with rocks because I loved doing rock work. So, that stonework there, I'm not going to say that there wasn't a stone wall there. All I know is that there wasn't one and I built one there alongside mom and dad's driveway. And there's stone steps you'll see and other stone walls and in multiple places, they don't look like there should be a stone wall, doesn't make sense, and that's because you had a high school guy out there doing it, so. But, just so you're aware of that, I just, you know, and I can understand why Tim wouldn't know that. So, I, I was thinking a lot about this and I just wanted to, I just want to say that we're talking about this road and I just want to, I guess, ask the question, why? So we're talking about, like, why not discontinue? And I know that, um, one of the things that Joe McLean had mentioned was that public, I think it was public need and public good. I think I might be getting that phrase slightly wrong, but it was about the public's, what good does this serve the public, kind of thing? And, um, I, I was thinking a lot about it and I was thinking, you know, there's, so first of all, it just, let's just for the sake of argument, I, I agree, I, I have some issues with the survey, but that aside, let's just say for the sake of argument or discussion that this, this road terminates right there at the stone wall. That's forty-nine and a half feet of access to Lot twenty-two, I think it is. That lot has hundreds of feet of access off the Woodbury Mountain Road, which is how everybody accesses Lot twenty-two. If, if anybody in Lot twenty-two ever decided to post their land, say, for example, this TH seven doesn't give anybody access on their property. It's, it's just takes you through there and it takes you right to the edge of their line, just like the Woodbury Mountain Road follows the edge of their line. And so it's not like this is buying the public, like this access to this property that the public doesn't already have. So, and the public already enjoys the access from the Woodbury Mountain Road and that's how it's been accessed, like I mentioned before, for, I'm going to say over a hundred years, um, because that road was not noticeable in the forties. Um, at least it was not traveled and my dad says, he doesn't even, he couldn't tell it was a road there, he was walking through a brook to get up there. So, when you ask the question, why, so when you all are deliberating, I think that would be a really good thing, like, why? Like, here we are, we're, you know, we're talking about surveys, we're talking about this, but like, let's just take a breath and step back, like, why? What is this buying the, the public in the town of Callis? It's really buying them, it's granting them access across mom and dad's property. That's what you're buying the, the people. And mom and dad's property, Mr. Lilly, I don't know, I mean, I know he's, and, and he's right. Doug has been up there hunting, because I've seen him up there hunting. When I was bird hunting, he was deer hunting. I don't think he knew I saw yet, but he was gone. Oh, there he is. But, but he was up there and, um, and the, uh, he was there because it's not posted. Dad's never posted his land, we've never posted our property and we don't intend to post our property. So, the public access across mom and dad's land is already there and even if mom and dad did post it, like, which, we're not playing on it, like, we're not, it's not in their, but they still have access through the Woodbury Mountain Road to get around there. And there's parking up there and, you know, it's just, that's, so you're not, we're not like losing something for the town. There are not snowmobiles that go up there. Dad allowed snowmobiles on his property. The snowmobiles don't have, don't want to go up TH seven and they're also very good about asking dad, like, where, where would you like us to go? Can we go on your land? Dad's like, yeah, sure, and he just keeps away from the house and everything's been fine for as long as I can remember, the snowmobile trail has been on mom and dad's land. And so, we're not trying to stop snowmobiles, we're not trying to stop, you know, the Boy Scouts go up there, they haven't in a couple of years, but they used to go up there every year in camp. Public are welcome. So, in fact, more than once, if they're going up there, and, and they don't use TH seven, by the way, because it's hard to walk. So, um, so there's that, the, the, the why. When we started this, one thing I noticed, they started this process, is the folks that have come out to oppose this have been to the same, there's a couple of people on the select board now, I know at least Denise and John were here, it's the exact same contingent of people that oppose the ancient roads to the, I think, almost to the T. And, um, and I know TH seven is not an ancient road, it has a, it's a class four road. I, I understand that. But in spirit, it kind of is. It's one of these like forgotten roads that is, it's, nobody uses it, it just lingers on the map, it's been untraveled, at least officially, since nineteen forty-one. And it's, it's, it's just one of these roads that are just there that have, are a nuisance to one family. And I, I would even dare say that there's some ancient roads that have been discontinued that probably would serve as a better asset to the town or would have served as a better asset to the town or a nicer place to walk, easier access, you probably actually could walk on the road and not down to gully, that were discontinued. And the reason is, is because the town came out in probably record numbers back then and, um, and it wasn't that long ago. I mean, it was years ago, but it wasn't that long ago. This upstairs was full and it went out into the, outside into the road and it was an overwhelming majority of the town that said, discontinue these.
No, that's our property you're talking about, Bain's, or ancient roads?
Ancient roads.
Yes, that was our property.
There was, there was...
That's true, yes.
Yeah, so there were some on Bain's property and they, and they, they discontinued a lot of the, I think, I don't know about, I don't want to speak because I, I know some of them required a process, but I know a great majority, not all of them were discontinued.
We, we had a vote, uh, mass discontinuance, that's what it was, and then we had individual roads that, based on recommendations of the Ancient Roads Committee.
Yes, there was a whole, we had a committee.
Yep. And, and I guess, I just, you know, given, given the, the, the facts here and the fact that like this has not been a public good, it's not, hasn't served as a public good and need. It, it, it just takes people across mom and dad's property and it hasn't been a public, a public need or a public good. What it has been though is, it's, it's, it has been, um, it's been something that we get the mud trucks coming up there and ATVs and they come up there and we got our kids out there playing. So we're talking about public need and public good. I guess I would just ask, and I think I said this in my last vote for testimony, so I'll just repeat it, I, I know, but we've got seventeen members of the family and more generations to come and that's part of the public and they're the ones that are affected. The folks that have, that are opposing this, they were outvoted, but they also didn't, um, they don't come over there. I haven't seen any of them over there walking on that property, walking up that road. And so they, a lot of them live on the other side of town. And, and so it's, it's, you know, the folks that do live nearby, a lot of them have written in letters, uh, um, not opposing, but supporting the discontinue, some of those are the ones that actually, nobody uses it. Even the Schultz's don't use, I don't use TH seven. I think I've been in it, like, the first time I probably walked the whole thing was when we went up there with Reed and I wanted to challenge myself to see if I could walk all the way up TH seven and I kind of thought, well, if we're going to walk it, let's walk it, you know, and, but I don't use it. I go up the other way, a lot prettier walks and easier ways to get through there. I guess I'll just say that, um, again, if it's discontinued, there's not, there, people are not coming out in droves. There's been a good, you guys have done a long process, you guys have had plenty of people given the opportunity to write in. I haven't seen one person write in or stand up here and testify saying, I want TH seven open because I use it. Because I, I want to go up there, I want to keep using, I don't want it taken away, this public need, this public good. I haven't seen anybody do that. Everybody's just clinging to it. I think of this, that old hole, that old t-shirt in the bottom of my drawer that I go through and I can't seem to just throw it away, because I'm like, well, and then all of a sudden, one day you're cleaning out your drawer, I'm like, why am I keeping this? I never wear it, I don't really like it that much, it's just taking up space and I get rid of the thing. And then I don't miss it, you know, and it's, that's what this reminds me of. And, um, and I guess I just, if, if it's discontinued, you will change the lives of our family. I mean, there's a lot of anxiety around this road, there's a lot of, it's safety, it's the, all these kids. And that's the positive. I, I, I really feel like the positive is going to way outweigh the negative of this. And this day and age, if you ever have a, a decision that you get to make like that, in this day and age especially, it's like, well, thank God, you know? I mean, and, and that's what I think. So I, I just wanted to end, and this, this picture was taken down, um, down, close to mom and dad's, it's, you know, you go in the woods a little ways. I'll, I'll show you all. This is TH seven, this is that, and this is on the survey. This is, you can't walk through there, it's washed out and this is one of the pictures that's in there, so you guys have this, I'll still enter as, as, yeah. But this is what the town, this is the town when folks say the town asset, this is what they're talking, and this is the way it looks like. Up, I mean, again, you all have seen it and you'll see it in the pictures. This isn't like, it wasn't hard for me to find this. I could have taken any number of these pictures in here.
You could frame it and hang it up.
I know, I am. I just wanted to show you all this. And I know Tim, I see Tim smiling and he was up there surveying it. This is after Tim surveyed. Yeah, yeah. This is after Tim surveyed and actually, you know, and I understand, had to cut some This is after Tim surveyed, and actually, you know, and I understand, had to cut some trees so he could get his traverse through there. And, um, this is, this is the gully in the washout that, that folks are talking about. And, um, this is what we're, the town, the asset. Again, if I was walking, I probably wouldn't know there was a road if I was a hiker. And hikers can come up here, they can, it's not posted, and they can walk around it. And we're not looking, that access through the Schulz property that terminates at the other line, they have it now. We're not looking to get rid of that, we're not looking to stop people from coming on our land. And then I took this picture, it's also on TH-7, but I wanted to show you all, this is what, this is the good, this is what we're trying, this is the public need, this is the public good. These are the ones that use it. Nobody's written in saying, I use TH-7, but these we have.
The lower section.
The lower section. And the upper section on Mom and Dad's land, we don't use it because it's too hard to use. So we walk around, we walk on Mom and Dad's property, and this is, so I'll show you, actually, if you are, just quick show the, the, the audience here. These are all, and there's kids missing, by the way. There's two, my two teenagers that are at soccer practice, and, um, there's, it's eleven kids. And these are just the ones that locally live here. We have four others, I'm getting the number right, four others that come and visit in the summertime, and Thanksgiving and Christmas. But TH-7 goes straight here. This is where Tim had mentioned that the driveway curls around to the barn. This is mowed, this is Mom and Dad's front yard. And I asked people, I said, I asked, and every, I've been to every single commission meeting they've had, and if I didn't go, it was because I didn't know about it, but I think I've been to all of them. And in every single commission meeting, it, there wasn't one time where anybody said there should ever be a road. Even the Trails Committee had a, had a note in there saying, "We don't ever wanna make this a trail unless a Schulz has ever asked for it, or wanted to." Nobody ever said there should ever be a road. And I think I even asked, at least the Conservation Commission, "Would you guys ever wanna run a bulldozer up and take out Mom and Dad's front yard here where it's been like this forever?" You know, and, and they're like, no, absolutely, absolutely not.
Josh, could I suggest, out of consideration for the third, fourth, fifth generation?
Yeah, yeah.
You kind of conclude.
Yes, I'm, yes, thank you. So to conclusion, guys, this is the good. This is the good, this is what we're trying to do here. We're trying to, and keeping it on the map, even as a trail, it's still gonna be on the map. People will still look at it, think, oh, I can get up there, I can go, I can take my truck up there. I, I just want to discontinue it. They have access to the neighbors already, and the people will still have access to Mom and Dad's land even after, long after this is gone. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm gonna, you can enter Ethan, yeah. Thank you. This chair is missed, um, probably by design. I, I know how you guys are.
Poor Josh.
Yeah, right. You need a cane, you know?
Reed, please. Would you like to testify, Reed?
The chair's bad, I want you to stretch it out. Hey Reed, we don't want any accidents.
Yeah, right, yeah.
So I want to say, Josh, you do a very good presentation. I, but I do feel I could say something about the difference between the ancient roads issues and, um, and this, that, issue. The ancient roads were almost entirely roads, I don't, I don't remember how many there was, at least forty, entirely roads that no one knew about, or that no one knew that the town had a claim to them. And so there was a big fairness issue in dealing with the ancient roads issue that doesn't apply to, um, whether, that doesn't apply to the issue of whether to keep or discontinue or, or change the classification of an existing known town road that's on the map. So I just wanna point that out. And it was a wrenching process, because a lot of people were very upset to discover that there were roads on their land that they didn't even know about. And they had, they had title searches, but they didn't go back to that far, and they didn't include that. So we, we had to really bend over backwards on behalf of those landowners. Whereas in this case, um, Gary built that house on, on a known town road, and, uh, it's still a town road, but he wasn't, it's not as if he was unaware of it. Have I made it reasonably clear?
Yes, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Reed, very good.
Is there anyone else who would like to testify? I think at this point, Joe, let me, let me ask you, my inclination at this point is to close the public hearing. Explain what our options are, and, uh...
I do have a question, Mr. Chair.
What?
Did the Trails Committee submit anything, any updates? Are we gonna...
They got any updates. They submitted a, um, let's see. Trails Committee sent an email on June 11th of 2022, exhibit number thirteen. Let's see what it says. Okay, says, um, you want me to read it?
Yeah.
On behalf of the Trails Committee, I would like to inform you that the committee, at its interim meeting on June 5th, voted to pass this law motion regarding the petition to discontinue or reclassify Town Highway 7. The Trails Committee recommends that the select board take no action on the Schulz family request, and that this no-action decision is underlined by commitment from the Trails Committee not to pursue a public trail on this property. Any other comments? So Joe, my inclination at this point is to close the public hearing and explain the process going forward. Is that all right?
Yes.
Before I do that, while the hearing is still open, do you guys have questions you'd like to add?
Uh, yeah, point of, point of clarification. If we, if, if we close, and this is, yeah, because I, I wanna understand what "close" means. If we close the hearing, then I understand Joe will explain to us legally, what the legal process is, and that involves private deliberation.
Yeah.
If we, at, at which time, we now will have the whole body of evidence in hand. If we have questions, then can you just, I wanted you to explain the process. If a question comes up, or a point of clarification that we have that isn't clear from the record, how do we, what I understood, a couple, maybe even July we met, is that we would, we might possibly open the hearing back up, ask Tim, ask somebody to go back and testify, help us answer the question, and then we go back in?
Right.
So, and I need a clarification to add to the chatroom. Are we closing tonight's hearing?
No. Closing the public hearing.
We're closing the entire hearing, and we're, and we're closing the record?
Yes, but we would, let me lay this out.
The reason I ask is, because we just got this survey, and the public may have just seen it, and how do they provide commentary?
That's what happened tonight. That's what tonight's hearing is for.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so here, let me try, make a shot at this, and Joe, help me out. So what I'd like to do is close the public hearing. That means we've taken all the testimony, we've got all the written material that we're gonna get, and it's now the record. We have to make our decision based on the record. We have three options. So what we would do, we'll close the public hearing. Then, at that point, we kind of act like a court. We then go into, we, we go into, I guess...
Deliberation.
In deliberation. We deliberate, that's not in public, any more than a judge deliberates in public. We take all the evidence, we read it, we discuss it, and we reach a conclusion, we reach a decision, and we write a decision. We, it's on, we write a decision which explains what we're doing and why we're doing it, just like a court's decision. We have three options. We could keep the right of way as a Class IV road. We could, uh, discontinue the road. We could class, reclassify the right of way as a trail. And whatever we do, the standard is...
You could upgrade it to a Class III.
We could. We could, is that it ha, our decision has to be expressly based on the legal standard, and what we are doing is reflecting the public good necessity and convenience of the town. So we can't just say, oh, we're doing this because it meets the public good convenience and necessity of the town. We have to explain ourselves, we have to relate it to the evidence that's before us. Now, my understanding is, let's say we all get together in this, this select board, and we start deliberating, and we realize there's something that's really important to the decision that we didn't hear about. We thought we'd heard everything, but we didn't. And we want to ask Reed Charrington a question, or we wanna ask our surveyor a question. We have to, we can't do that in private. We have to reopen the public hearing, notice that we're reopening it, give all the generations who are here a chance to come back and hear our question and the answer, and make any comment they want to make. Then we would reclose the hearing. I'm not saying that will happen, I'm saying it could happen.
We don't have...
Well, that's what happened tonight.
Yeah.
That's what happened. Well, we never closed a hearing here.
Right, we never closed it, we discontinued them.
We continued it, okay.
And how many days have, and is it twenty days or forty days?
Sixty days.
Sixty days, right?
Sixty days from closing the public hearing?
Off the way.
Okay, so, Joe, did I say that right?
Yes.
Okay. I have, I'm gonna close it, yeah, because we have to...
Enter, you have to enter the...
Right, we're gonna enter, is, I don't know what to exactly call this, um, Josh?
Call it his, I don't know, his name, Samuel.
But he's saying it's Gary's pictures or something, right?
Are they, who's Josh?
Samuel, like Josh.
Who took the pictures?
Um, my, uh, Kristen, my wife, and then Charlie took some.
Okay.
Those primarily...
Some, we call it Josh Schulz's pictures, and...
Submitted by my parents, though. I did it for Dad, Dad asked me to go up there and take them, so, yeah, that's why it's from my dad.
All right, so it's...
Don't forget to send them to us electronically.
Yes, I will, I will, yeah, I'll pop it to you.
And then do we need to enter these separately? They're in here, these are just bigger versions. I don't think we need to do that.
I don't think you need to separately enter them. Those could just be...
They can have a demonstrative exhibits that we can...
Demonstrative exhibits.
Okay, so suddenly we're making motions to enter exhibits, so...
We don't, I don't, we just, we have, okay.
Now, I am therefore asking for a motion to close the public hearing.
I think you got a motion in a second.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing on TH-7, on this TH-7 matter?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so the hearing is closed. I cannot thank you enough for the patience and the respect for the process that you have shown. I know this is the kind of thing that excites passions, and I think you've been just wonderful. So thank you so much. We will do our very best by, that's all I can say, our very best.
Quiet. According to the legal standards.
Yeah, we will act according to the legal standard. And is there any other comment or final statement by member of the board?
No, other than thank you all, you've been very kind to each other, and that's really important.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
No, I don't, I thought, can we have more, do we wanna deliberate at all?
No.
So what we're going to do, we have to do, is we'll pick, and I...
Do we adjourn?
Before we adjourn, so we will find a evening when we can deliberate. You'll be with us. Do you come to the deliberations?
I think you should be there. I do think you should.
Do we have a clock ticking where we have to adjourn?
Sixty days.
It's to render a decision.
To render a decision. It's a sixty-day statute of tortitude. Isn't that classical, staying on the need for sixty days? So it's, 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 it's a...
Right, you can't do it anymore, Joe? Well, yeah, just for, yeah, for people who are, you can score at home.
Right.
We have a lot of other things.
Okay, right.
Well, that's my advice, that's what I said, yeah.
We have a motion on the floor to adjourn. If all those in favor, could you say aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, kids, your kids are amazing.
Nice to meet you, Tim, thank you.
Thank you.